The time is six o'clock. It's good to see everybody here tonight. Our meeting will begin with an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We thank you for allowing us to be here and handle the district's business. We ask you just be with us and help us do the best job that we can do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and this is our organizational meeting in July. And so what we'll do, our first order of business is to have the oath of office for our two newly elected board members, Mr. Free and Mr. Quinn. We'll start with Mr. Free, and if you would like, you and your family may join us in this oath of office. Fantastic. Would someone like to hold the flag? Someone hold it. Raise your hand. That's great. Thank you. You can raise your hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of office.
To exercise the duties of office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Great, congratulations. Next, we have Mr. Quinn and family. And just repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I think it's, I think it's so important that we include family. I know as our board members are here, we have families that are at home. And so they understand the duties and the responsibilities of being a board member and the commitment and the dedication that it takes to do it well. And so we appreciate our families and for being here and congratulations to you very much. Okay. Our, our next order of business is to, to, to have the election of officers for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five year. And so the chairman presides at all meetings of a board and performs other duties as directed by law, State Department of Education regulations, and by this board. At this time, do we have a nomination for board chair?
Gina McDeal.
We have one nomination for Gina McDeal. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Ms. McDeal serving as board chair for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. Our next order of business, okay, we're gonna turn it over to our chair. How about that? Congratulations, Ms. McDeal.
Thank you, sir. Whoa, I got my chair.
Even with this chair, it's.
Solemnly.
No, you're perfect.
The next order of business on, we go, continue with our.
Yes, please.
Uh, do we have a nomination for vice chair? The vice chairman will serve in the capacity of chairman in the absence of the chairman and be responsible for the duties and responsibilities assigned to this office. Is there a second, a nomination for vice chair?
A nomination, co.
And I nominate Cody Quinn.
I will withdraw. I appreciate that, Rodney, but I will withdraw my nomination on, uh, I respectfully decline that. I think it's good that we get some other folks involved, so. Thank you, Rodney.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Mr. Cody Quinn as the vice chair for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five year signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by like sign. Motion carries. May I say one thing to Ms. Wells?
Sure.
Ms. Wells, we, we've been friends a long time, but I've never worked with you in this capacity. When a motion is made, if you need more time, if you will raise one finger just like that, I will slow down. If you have what you need, if you'll give me two, then I'll know we can go forward. We now are accepting and the chair is requesting a nomination for secretary for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Is there a nomination in place before and up before the group?
I nominate, nominate this officer.
Do we have another nomination? Hearing none, all those in favor of Ms. Saltzer signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. The next order of business that proceeds in the agenda is, I'm looking at this.
Ms. McDeal, can I just ask one thing? At the discretion of the Board of Trustees, the board may employ an individual to report the minutes and proceedings of the board, which for the past several years has been Ms. Wells. And we just, I just wanted to check to see if that's the, that's the will of the board.
Are there any objections?
Who isn't voting?
No.
No, I think that's a consensus. So also, you okay with that?
Congratulations, Ms. Wells.
She does, she does a great job. We're really, really proud of her and keeps us in line. Uh, yes, ma'am.
The minutes have been distributed in your packet. Are there any questions pertaining to any of the written information that has been placed in your packet? Hearing none, the chairman is requesting a motion to approve the minutes as so stated.
Want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed signify by like sign. Motion carries. The agenda that's set before you, are there any additions or deletions that any board member wishes to make at this time? Hearing none, the chair is requesting a motion to approve the agenda for the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed signify by like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
I suppose you have a motion, a second for that?
I have a motion.
Do you have Gina's second for, for the agenda? Do we have, do we have a second for the approval of the agenda?
Do we, do we?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Saltzer. Appreciate it.
Do we have anyone present with public input? Hearing none, I will move to, I suppose you will handle the next.
Yes, yeah, I'd be glad to. Uh, next on our agenda is the, the Heart of Hornet. And I, I love this part of our, 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 our board meeting. Usually it's been called in the past, the standing ovation. But we have so many people who dedicate themselves, that go unnoticed, who work extremely, extremely hard. A lot of us took vacations this summer, and we have some that stayed behind and worked to make sure that our schools look fantastic and that have dedicated themselves to making sure that the floors are done and that they are ready for students when, when they come. And so at this meeting, I'd like to recognize three individuals, if that's, if that's okay. Mr. Tim Allen, we have, also have his sidekick this summer, which, which Mr. Bryant was, was one of his students that we had that, that served with, with him, and that was Preston Bryant. Did, did a great job, good learning experience for him and, and gave him an opportunity and he, he maximized that and did well. And then we also have Ms. Tracy Cooper, who's, who really jumped in here at the final stretch of, of the year and of the summer and, and really made especially the bottom floor of the high school looks, looks so good. The lights come on and you can, you can see yourself in that floor. And I'm, I'm very proud of the, the work that they've done. So this, this evening, I'd like to recognize those accomplishments. I'd like for them to come forward. I'll present them with, with the Heart of Hornet. Tracy, thank you very much. I appreciate what you do. Well, well done. I appreciate it. If we could go ahead and get a photo of y'all as well?
Get our picture.
Yeah, that's right.
I'd like to say I'm glad I came to this meeting, cause now I still fuck the hard cheer there and the rolling one there. Rolling one there and the hard cheer there now. Where everybody get their pictures in there, they don't go where they went.
I'd like to say, Tracy, you always will have a soft spot in my heart. There isn't anything you can't do. And if I have on my epitaph from Tim Allen, it will be, Ms. McDeal, Ms. McDeal, get off the ladder. Thanks. Next on the agenda, uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Daniel Crockett for the superintendent update.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
This evening, there's, I, I want to start by saying how, how excited I am for this upcoming year. I'm, I'm thrilled for the opportunity to, to serve in this capacity. I don't, I do not view it as a job. I do not, um, um, view it as a position. I view it simply as a responsibility. And I'm humbled by that responsibility and take it very serious. And we will, we'll be results oriented and we will make sure that we're very intentional with the things that we do. And, uh, and, and I saw that this, this past week with, um, with our registration and with our principals and their support staff really stepping up and having an absolutely fantastic registration. We have a little bit more, we have a few more students than we typically do at this time register. And we've had significantly a lot less, um, issues or difficulties with the registration process. And so we're, we're definitely chalking that up for success. We still have some folks that are, are trying to come in from their one last vacation and are trying to, trying to get registered as well. And so we'll, we'll be, of course, open, uh, our, our doors for them to come in and all the way up to the twenty-fourth for the first day of school. This is a big week. We have teachers that are also returning. And our big district opening day is this Thursday. Um, we're excited about that. We have an action packed week full of, of trainings as far as safety protocols and working on PD and, and making sure that our teachers have enough time in their rooms as well to be able to, to prepare for the most important thing that's coming, and that's our students next week. And so I think we have a really nice blend of, of training, but also enough time for, for our teachers to, to prep and prepare. I have to give a lot of credit to Mr. Armstrong. We have really a big project that was, was, um, that had occurred over the summer break with our, our phone upgrades with, with Piedmont Rural. And so that went very well and did, he did a very nice job overseeing that project. Uh, I'd like to, um, talk a little bit about our paving project at the Wareshoals Middle School. Uh, we just received, um, our last report from, from the kind of the oversight, the inspector there. And it looks like cones will be able to be taken off on Wednesday morning. She's been very, very patient. It's been so hot. It's been so hot. And so the cure time for that asphalt is just taking a little bit longer than what it was. If we would have had a, a nice rain, um, those cones would be down by now. But just because it's been so hot for so long, it's taking, it's taken that asphalt significantly. A, a lot longer to, to cure. We would have loved to have that ready for registration. We do understand that our parents may have had to walk across the street a little bit to get into the building. But not waiting could have had, you know, a lot longer impact on, on that asphalt and the longevity of it. So, so we decided to take the advice and, and stay off of that. So Wednesday morning, we'll celebrate with those cones coming off and we'll, we'll be parking in that park lot. Ms. Wells, thank you for your patience, especially your staff too. We also have, really been working hard on enhancing our school safety, which is a priority of ours. We have, have to give a lot of credit to, um, Mr. Clamp. And he's been overseeing a project with installing, uh, with Dill's locks. They've been putting new hardware on our high school and our middle school doors as far as, also with security, allowing those to be master keys and to implementing a, a new key system so that old keys that have been out there for a long time are, are no longer will work on that. And so all those, those projects were, were paid for with our, um, safety grant that we were awarded. And so that was, um, no fiscal impact on, on our district. And so we were thankful for, for overseeing that. Tom, I thanks, thanks for overseeing that project for us. We're also very proud of the emergency protocols that we're enhancing. We, we were working really hard before the first day of school to, to make sure that we're streamlining and really, um, kind of being much more efficient in how we operate in, in times of emergencies. And I appreciate Ms. Pitts, again, Mr. Clamp, and our administration team as we, we've been looking at those protocols and making sure that we can be, be very efficient and, and really have a good understanding of, of who's responsible and what's to take place, um, in, in, in times of emergency or any safety protocols that we might need to implement. And so that's been, that's been a, a great addition. We are in the process of collecting three bids for our amphitheater repair, and so that's, uh, that's a project that needs to get done. And, and so, um, the prices came in a little, a little bit higher than we expected, the first one. And so we're, we're looking at trying to get, um, uh, three bids to get that completed. And in fact, the third one came today. And so we're, we'll work on, work on that and follow our procurement policy for that. Uh, we have, our fire alarm project is nearing completion at the middle school as well. It was reported that we have, um, some tamper motors that are kind of on the HVAC. That, that, what that does, it's not really tied to our fire alarm, but, but its role is to prevent smoke from going into other classrooms that these, these motors would prevent, um, you know, that smoke from kind of going through our system. And so I believe next Wednesday, if not before, we should have those, um, those things addressed for our final inspection. It says, we have a, a certificate of occupancy, so we're allowed to continue on. It's not something that's gonna prevent our school from starting, but it's just something that needs to be addressed as quick as possible so we can kind of get our, our final, um, inspection completed. We have our softball field, and so I was, um, I had the, a great pleasure of meeting with Bruce Studdeth. And so he, it works with the Sports Field Management Association. And so he came and walked in our field. It was nice. We had a little bit of rain the night before. And so we were kind of able to see where some pooling was, was taking place. We saw, uh, saw a little bit in third, uh, a little bit more in first base. And there was a kind of a hole that's behind pitcher's mound. And so we pointed that, he, he, uh, the real big purpose that I wanted to, 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 to have that meeting with him was to get our specs in line. We wanted to make sure that, that what we had in mind for the project was, was actually, um, the scope of work that needed to be done. He was very supportive of it, of this, of the specs that we have and of the laser grading and taking care of that, removing, they called it an apron, which is the divider between the infield and the outfield to, to, to cut that back, allow for more drainage to go into the grass. And, um, and so he, he thought that we were on, on target. He, he did provide me a couple of, of projects that he's worked on in the past to make sure that we would be compliant. We look forward to, um, putting that on our, um, putting on the state procurement website and trying to, to get that moving as quick as possible. Along with, along with that, uh, comes the stadium lights. Lots of stuff going on. And so, uh, the stadium lights, I did ask for an update on that. The lights are in. And I did, um, uh, the pole manufacturer is supposed to have those delivered in mid-August, towards the end of August. And then they'll schedule, uh, an opportunity to, to come out to a site visit, remove the old poles and, and get those set up. So as far as the softball field, things, things are moving. We're being, uh, as active as we can to kind of get that project going. And with, with that, I'm sure there's, there's lots more revisions going on, but if you have any questions about those things, I'll be, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Now, with the softball field, are we looking at, would it be like a complete overhaul or just model, a general maintenance type?
That's a great question. Uh, but there's, uh, when we were presented some options, there were certain tiers. Uh, the first one being making sure that we were able to really hone in on what was the most safety, what was the risk, the largest risk that was there. And the first one was the, the infield field of play. Getting that laser graded, trying to get rid of the drainage that's there. Making sure that you kind of scrape some of that off and put some, uh, really some sports clay in there. Trying to support, uh, the ladies who are sliding, you know, trying to, to make that a little bit more of a playable surface, a level surface. And so, um, that would be our first step. Now, we can go as, as deep into this project as you can imagine, you know, but that will be the, the first, um, most important project. And that was, I believe, approved in our past board meeting to not exceed thirteen, thirteen thousand eight hundred. And so we're kind of pursuing that at this point. Thank you for that question, it's good. Any, any other questions?
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Before you, we have, um, action items and we have board policy updates. Dr. Crockett, I wonder if you will address the procurement policy in terms of your needs?
Uh, yes, ma'am, absolutely. What I would like to propose tonight is for us to take, uh, our, our first look at a, a revision of Policy DJR, which is our purchasing policy. We have, we have a good policy in place, uh, but it was adopted last updated in two thousand and seven. And that was close to seventeen years ago. And we had a threshold of seventeen years ago of twenty-five hundred, um, being the, the threshold that we would allow, um, three bids to be required to, to purchase something. Now, I am, I am, I prioritize, you know, fiscal management, making the, making use of every dollar that we have. And so you, you say, okay, well, what's that threshold should be? So I, I looked at other districts. The common practice is, is, is ten thousand dollars, um, for three bids. And so we can see over seventeen years, the prices of things have escalated. We, I'll give you a great example. Um, we, we're looking, uh, this week at replacing a washing machine. Let's see Coach in the back, Coach. And, um, and so we had a washing machine that went, went out in the, uh, in the field house and that needed to be addressed. But of course, that's gonna go over twenty-five hundred. When we have things that are, are breaking in our, um, in, in our cafeteria, you know, those cafeteria goods, you know, machines and, you know, things that we use to, that's always gonna go over twenty, twenty-five hundred. Things are just very expensive. And so this would allow us to have a little bit of relief on that. And then there's a second portion that we would take, like to take a look at the policy, and that is for architectural services. The, the process, if we were to, um, perform a project where we, uh, we, it would allow us not to, uh, of the limits of fifteen thousand dollars for architectural services, meaning that we wouldn't have to put out for bid an architect, maybe wait for the procurement period to, to, to end. And then when it, when it closes, then put the project back out and see who are our top three bidders for that. And so it would allow us a little bit of reprieve with up to fifteen thousand dollars for services. Now, we have to be really mindful of the state procurement policy in states. You, you, you can't have more than forty-five thousand over a twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, twenty-four month period. And so we'll be very mindful of that as well. So that's, that's, uh, that's our request, um, for, in updating our purchase revision.
Dr. Crockett, I raised the question, and even at a ten thousand dollar limit, you start buying, um, standalone computers and ice machines and even used, um, they're very difficult to find in that, in that range. Are you, do, are you comfortable with a flat range or could we, um, provide a slide at that point?
I think if we, if we can test the waters with ten, I, 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 I really want, cause I want us to push even if it was five. Is, is five, is five thousand a really good quote?
Yeah.
We have to be really mindful of that, and, and so every dollar counts. So I, I would like us to be, if, if anything, a little bit more restrictive than, than loose. And so ten thousand, I think, would be fine. And I appreciate that question.
Thank you, sir. Now, assuming that you get into that position, you would bring it to the board and I'd make you find full support there.
Thank you.
One more question I have, Dr. Crockett. Um, now, or if you said the archite, um, at the fifteen thousand mark. Now, just say it's something small and it's like you got some that's under fifteen and some over fifteen. How would it, how would it play into a role situation, something like that happen, for state's merit?
Sure. I think we're able to get estimates of what the architectural fee should cost. So if we have that general working, we'll have a, if, if it's on the side of, hey, this might go over, it might not, we'll, we'll always shake and say, hey, let's see if we can get three bids. Let's put it up for procurement. If it's gonna be close, we'll shut, uh, we'll kind of shy towards, I mean, a little bit much more conservative and put that up for procurement and go that route.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Again, Dr. Crockett, with Title, the Title I plan and federal programs, would you address that on tap too?
Sure. Can I get approval for that?
Yes, sir. Um, there's a motion on, the chair is requesting a motion for approval to adjust the procurement policy, DJR, to include ten thousand dollars for outgoing bids and architectural bids to readjust at fifteen thousand.
I'm like, I'm like, can I approve that?
All those in favor, say aye. A second?
I'll say.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
So title, title one?
Yes, sir.
In our, um, it's, it's that time of year we do this, do this every year. But one of the largest grants that we have outside of IDVA, um, is, is Title I. And, um, it's, we're very thankful for the, the funding. We try to use it the best we can. You'll see that the vast majority of our Title I budget is gonna be on salaries and benefits. And it's, it is interesting to see that, um, as, as we increase the teacher salary, and we're, we're all for that and, and being able to support our, our teachers. And, um, when you, when we do that, you can see that as salaries increases, you know, the flexibility with your budgets kind of decrease. And so you're, you're given a certain allotment, and as those salaries increase, it kind of eats up a little bit more of your federal programs. But, but, um, this year, our, our Title I budget, uh, looks to come in at three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, uh, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. And which, uh, three hundred and thirty-four of that, you know, which is ninety, ninety percent or so, uh, would be, uh, allocated for salaries for our interventionists, for our lab manager, for, uh, part-time guidance counselors at both. We paid for, we were able to have those guidance counselors at, at both locations and lib, and librarians, um, to allow librarians at both locations as well. And we have a little bit for our license agreements, some purchase services, and then also some instructional supplies. Usually things like, um, if we, if we need some promethium panels or if we need, um, a few little supplies or if we need a few additional, um, uh, books for a classroom or, or things like that. It's usually where, where we lean on Title I to help support us with that.
Are there any questions? Thank you, sir. You'll continue.
I have a, we have a book to approve that.
I don't think you have to, do you have to approve Title I?
We have in the past, but we don't.
No, we've done it in the past.
Okay.
Let's keep doing it. I've never voted on it. Is there a motion to approve the funds allocated for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget for Title I? Three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
I move that we approve our twenty-four, twenty-five Title I budget.
Is there a second?
I'll say for that.
Are there, is there any? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Next on our agenda for our action items is we'd like to get approval for courses that are not typically in the curriculum that's adopted by state. And so when we do that, we do seek for approval for us to be able to implement a curriculum that's kind of outside the guidelines of the state. I think there's, in fact, what I would like to do, if that's okay with the board, I'd like to recognize Jeanine Weber, principal at our middle school, to kind of give us a little bit of update on her vision, her intent for these courses.
Good evening.
Good evening, board.
This year, we have four courses that we want to share with our students this year. We've been fortunate and blessed to have some really talented teachers that have brought some strong talent and dedication to our students with ideas to be able to have these classes. And several of them that you put last year went out for the success. One of the first ones is robotics. Robotics will be taught by Courtney Coffey, and it will be offered to our fifth and sixth graders at this time and after school for our seventh and eighth. A program, she'll have after school program for after, after school. Robotics is an engineering and computer science class. The foundation of it is coding. Students will learn how to code, design, make their own robots. They also have an opportunity to build their critical thinking skills and problem solving. They also encourage them to collaborate and work as a team. When you, if you never visit the robot, hopefully you'll be able to visit the robotics classroom, but they're given a task, they're given a thing, and pretty much they run it. She teaches the coding process, she teaches the collaboration and how, and the kids work together using computers, using laptops, using everything that they have available to them to create and make that task come alive, whatever the task or the problem they have to solve come alive in that class. So we're hoping to be able to offer that course this year during the school, during the school day. Journalism yearbook, taught by Ms. Kate Pulli, co-taught by Ms. Courtney Coffey, she helps with yearbook. It is the process of creative writing and a production course. Our journalism kids, any flyer that you see, any post that we have, our journalism kids have created it. They do the morning news every day, they do, they interview people, staff, anything that's going on, they make sure that information gets out to the school. And they do that on a daily basis. Every morning, what they, they call it the buzz, every morning they rotate the seventh grade, eighth graders, they rotated, that one is, he's gone.
He went across country.
Had one of our stars here that's on, that's on that staff, but it's been very beneficial. They prepare them when they get to high school, they pretty much know what to do, and they keep that process going in the high school program also. This course also is in conjunction with this course would be the yearbook staff, where they work on the school yearbook, yearbook, they're working all year, they do the pictures, they do the posts, they do everything that's involved, working on the computers. And it gives them ownership of the yearbook and pride. They even work with me, pick out the cover and all that. They have a lot of say-so, a lot of student voice in the yearbook that's presented at the end of the school year. The next class is Twenty-First Century Skills. This class will be taught in seventh grade primarily by Ms. DeWort. Our fifth grade teachers will be doing it during our RTI time, and we have, and our eighth grade teachers will be doing it at the end of the day. It is our responsibility to pair our students for the real world. And this course is designed to do just that. It's a character education-based course. The basis of the course is to cultivate leadership, positive character traits, the ability to set goals, collaborate with others, and decision-making skills, all that wrapped into one. To begin the program, we're going to use a program entitled I Lead by the John Maxwell Foundation that's going to give them the nine fundamental, fundamentals, excuse me, foundations of that course, that's going to be the foundation of that course. Once those students learn that process and those nine foundations, they will be able to apply those to projects based learning. They'll also be able to apply it to collaborative working, not only in that class, but in all their classes. We hope to be able to see it throughout all the classes and also build their character. Build their character and build their confidence, because the goal is for the teacher to be the facilitator and the students to take a lead. The course will then expand, as I said, into project collaborative-based learning activities that will also build the culture and climate of our school and the relationships with the community. So by the end of the year, we want them to be able to do projects that will reach out into the community. We started a little bit of that last year with our theme, and we want to keep that going. Instead of the community coming to us, we go out into the community. So we hopefully it stands. These students will also implement these skills in the structured learning enrichment groups that will be aligned with the South Carolina State standards. And the last course that I'm asking for approval, STEM, between science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. This will be taught by Susan Zimmerman for our fifth through eighth gifted and talented students. The STEM education is a student inquiry and critical thinking course. Students are challenged to use their problem-solving skills that connect with real-world solutions. They're hands-on course that applies science, technology, engineering, arts, and math through problem-based learning activities. For example, last year, they did stroke awareness, and they had the entire school involved, and they went around and taught stroke awareness, what are the signs, what should they do, what's the protocols, but they saw it was a problem that was given to them, and they came up with a solution, which is real life, which is real life. This Zimmerman took that personally because she had a stroke in the classroom. And if it wasn't for a student acting fast, in that case, then we don't know what happened. So that was a kind of a personal thing, but she put the problem to the students without even sharing her story, they came up with a solution to how our school could be aware. So that's just one of the project-based learning things that they did. They did a lot of other things, but that's what we want to build on. This course will also create a exploratory learning environment that will increase the depth of knowledge with align, being aligned with state standards. Does anybody have any questions?
Sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
You have reported your four very creative and important courses that the middle school is requesting, Robotic, Journalism Yearbook, Twenty-First Century Skills, and STEM. The chairman is, and the board is, the chairman is asking the board for a motion to accept these for the twenty-four, twenty-five academic year.
I make a motion to approve the courses presented for the month.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Great job, Ms. Zimmerman. Appreciate your leadership on that. I think there's a central thing that you can see is students using their hands and being creative, problem-solving, and I think that's extremely important. It wasn't too long ago where I was, it really struck home with me, I was in the egg science shop, and I was watching students that were making birdhouses. And they would take this pine board and they'd have, they'd have a nail, and they would hammer it, hammer it down, just because they're learning, you know, it's a learning process, and we're not critiquing, it's a learning, but they would bend the nail over, and they would hammer it, nail it, you know, or they would take it and the pine board would split. And I had shared with some of you that I was really convicted when I said, you know, you can make a pilot hole, and to grab the drill bit and to take your drill and make a pilot hole. But when they, they did exactly what I asked, but they didn't know how to put the drill bit into the drill to lock it in. And it was, it was at that point when we're so focused on being able to graduate, okay, we'll get kids across the line, we'll have them graduate, but what skills do they have to really help their future families? And so you're going to start seeing that theme throughout here where kids aren't going to be able to problem-solve and kids are going to be able to work with their hands and to get along with each other. And so that, you should see that coming through as a central theme as we go up throughout the years. And so I appreciate that support there. Next on our agenda is, it's my pleasure and very thankful to have this opportunity to present to you some recommendations for hire. And as of, I think it was Wednesday, when we pushed this agenda out, we didn't put those, put them in there because we didn't have any at that time, we were very optimistic. And in fact, about half an hour or so before our board meeting, one actually came in too. So I appreciate, I apologize for the delay, I appreciate your patience with us. But I am pleased to present two recommendations for hire, one for information only because it's a classified position, but I would like to share those with you, if that's okay. Our first would be David Painter. And David has been a product, he's been in other districts around, he's experienced and is a working retiree. And so we were fortunate, fortunate to have him. And in fact, he had signed this morning, is that right? Yeah, it was, it's a long day, so it was this morning, is that right? And that he came in and he had signed this, and so he has recommendations, you can see those there. Background check has already been, has already been completed. And so it's recommending Mr. Painter for our high school science vacancy. If it's okay, can I, can I go on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Will take his conclusion.
Sure, thank you. The next is our Spanish that we've been working on for a long time. We thought we've had this a couple times, and so today, it's on ink, and we're thrilled to have this. And so this was the one that was just recent, but it's Miss Kayla Anderson. It's important to note this one is, will be, of course, replacing Miss Sabatino in our high school, but it's going to have a little different format that, well, we're going to look at a virtual option for this. She'll be live, it's not, it's going to be someone that we know, she'll actually come in for the first couple days, get things set up, get to know the kids, and then have a virtual option there. That's, we've looked at several different potentials and possibilities. We feel this one having a certified teacher, you know, to be able to present instruction to our students, we'd have a classroom manager that's going to be in there to oversee it and to work with that teacher. But things like open house, you know, parent teachers, as far as communicating with parents, that will still be the responsibility of that teacher, just won't be in the classroom from every day that's going to be there. So there's going to be a virtual component there for most of the days. Is there any, any questions on that one? Because it's a little, a little unique. And I could take those questions if you have them at the end. The one just for information only is we did hire a part-time vacancy in our food service in our high school, and we're thrilled to welcome Ms. Smith, who's been in our district before, and excited to have her back again, and she's excited as well.
I have one question, Dr. Crockett, with Miss Anderson, if she's in there part-time, will she hold another position?
She'll be full-time Spanish.
That's great.
She'll be full-time, full-time Spanish, and we have a lot of Spanish students and are needing that requirement for foreign language to go to university, and we've looked at several different options. And, but she has experience in virtual too. I'd be really concerned if it was just, hey, I want to give virtual a try, but has years, they even worked at the community college level, teaching virtually too, so has experience, knows how to set up a classroom, knows how to conduct that virtual, virtual instruction. And so we're really, really thrilled to have her as an option for sure.
I am too, and they'll, they'll experience that on college level. It's great that they're going to be exposed to it here. Is there a motion that we accept the two employment opportunities that have been placed before us, Miss Kayla Anderson and Mr. David Painter?
Make a motion to accept both of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, motion carries. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Next, in tab five, is our two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school board meeting dates. And even as I'm thinking about that right now, I would like to, if you had looked at those, and hopefully those dates are sufficient, most of them are still continuing to be the third Monday in, in, third Monday of each month. We do have school tours that sometimes in the past have been bumped up to four o'clock. If we want it to continue to be six o'clock, that's fine, but we may lose some of the student activities, that's up to the discretion of the board. But if we want to, I know work schedules are very, very difficult, and I respect those. So if we, if we want to keep it at six o'clock for those dates, that's, that's fine as well. There's two days, December ninth and June ninth, which are the second Mondays, and we'll try to send reminders out for those days as well. But hopefully those days will work with our group and we can continue meeting at that time.
Dr. Crockett, if you don't mind, I'm asking, on the school tours, one thing I've been, I don't know how to rest the board, but I, I know how I feel about, I actually like going, and I know it does affect work schedules a little bit, but I actually do like going when the kids are there, and you see, you actually see what a real school is like as far as going through, you know?
If that's, if that's what we want to do, we'll, our door's open.
Absolutely.
Would you like it on that date?
It's just, I mean, whenever, I just, at least once a year, I'd like to go through, you know, there in the school, like, just to see.
Do you want to take some discussion on that?
Yes, sir. Is there any discussion pertaining to Mr. Quinn's request or any other date that's placed on your agenda? I like going in when they're there too. If it's not disruptive, now I've got principals out here and teachers, would you invite any, would you invite any of your?
I like when y'all come by, when the kids are, I like it whenever y'all get to come by and see it as a teacher. I enjoy whenever y'all come by each year, and we've been, so I mean, so you've gotten to see, I like it as a teacher.
How do the principals feel here?
I think it'd be great.
Great.
I mean, just to be able to see everything in action, you know, I mean, you can see tonight, but just to be able to watch our kids work and our teachers work, I mean, I think that's beautiful.
To me, it's a sign of support.
Yeah.
And every, just about every workshop we went to, they advised the board to go many times and to call and say, look, this isn't an I got you visit, this is a thanks for what you're doing visit. And that gives us a chance to get to them, teachers, and volunteer when they need judges and that type of thing.
Would it be feasible to keep the date that we go as a group and then have options to do a personal visit as long as you reasonably schedule it out ahead of time? Would that be?
Well, I mean, that's fine, I'm fine with that. I'll just say once, you know, at least once a year, you know, the time we went through, I don't think all the board members were there, I can't remember who was missing, but you know, just, I mean, I'm fine with still doing it in the afternoon, you know, but I wouldn't like at least one time to go through and see what the kids and teachers are managing.
Any further discussion? Dr. Crockett, I'm hearing the recommendation that perhaps we keep it, it's the, and please correct me if I'm wrong, keep your, the dates as is, and perhaps schedule another date in line with principals that we could come in and just visit. I mean, just.
Okay, I can, I can do that. And what I'll do is I'll try to send out a poll, maybe a couple days, that might work with the group, see if I can have that, what works well with the schedule of principals, and I'll try, I'll try to have that prepared before our next board meeting in August, if that's okay. That's a two-month lead, that gives enough, enough time? Okay.
We still need to approve those dates.
We do. Do you want to approve these dates?
Yeah. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the schedule of meetings for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, please indicate. By motion, say.
Yeah, motion.
Yes, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the dates presented for the school board meeting for the next year.
That's okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And you have the monthly budget review.
Yes. Yes, and so the monthly budget review is, is in tab six, if you can look that over. If there's any questions, well, we'll put Ms. Wells to the, to the right, and see what she can come up with. I, I would like to say there is a few outstanding things that we still have, so just keep those in mind, okay? We have some committed funds, so to speak, we have a paving project that we're, we're required to pay, to pay, we have our, our light, our light situation that we're committed to paying, we have our, the final portion of the fire inspection to get, get that completed, we have the field of play or light holes, I can't remember which one I said before, but the, the other one, those, those two projects that we've committed to, to doing, so I, I think getting those, those projects in, still trying to make sure that we're able to enhance what we're currently doing, is, is, is going to be the appropriate path here, but using, using some, some good judgments we go forward until these bills are paid.
Absolutely. Is there any question pertaining to the budget review? Hearing none, and I don't think we vote on that.
No. I would like to add just something else, if that's okay. School's starting, which is the most important thing, right? I'm, I'm so excited for kids to come, and I know we have the big kids, we call teachers, they come, they come this week, and I'm excited for them to come, and the energy that's in our, in our schools is just, becomes, it's just energy, it's just energized, and I can't wait for that to happen. And I love the new, the, the new clothes that kids come in, and their new shoes, and they're proud, and their backpacks that they have, and we're, we're thrilled with the Odell Corporation, you know, obviously, making the lives of our, our families for, for those that are in kindergarten, four K through, through fourth grade, so much easier to come to school, it's just a very generous donation, and so we're, we're honored to have that. Our theme this year is going to be Training Today for Tomorrow's Success, and so I'd like to invite all of you to come to our, our district opening date that works with your schedule, and our, our guest speaker is Cameron Dorn, I think she's a two thousand and six graduate, we've spoken many, many times, and so for Training Today for Tomorrow's Success, what a great person to come in and talk to us about, about training and life, life, life skills and his, his experiences, to really get our, our staff energized for a fantastic year. We also, from the South Carolina School Boards Association, has also created a welcome-back poster, that they're encouraging all of the school boards in South Carolina to, to hold to take a picture of, and also to send it to them, and so as we, before we adjourn, we can adjourn, and then if it's okay, and I'd love, even after we adjourn, to take that, take that photo, and, and be able to share that, and show ours excitement for the, for the first day of school that's coming next week. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion carries.